I'd like to call to order the November 5, 2013, regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. I invite you to stand if you wish, and we'll open with the invocation, and I'll lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Father, thank you again for a wonderful day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of this community, and pray that you give us guidance as we consider all the items that appear before us tonight. Thank you, Lord, for all that you've done for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Haller, please call the roll.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
First item on our agenda is a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining comments from citizens regarding housing and community development needs for the development of a five-year consolidated plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
I'll defer to Mr. Childers, who will lead us in holding a public hearing as required by HUD for the receipt of CDBG funds.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo. May I, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to come for you tonight, talk about the CDBG program. I understand that you all have a copy of the presentation, so I'll go through the first part fairly quickly, because a lot of it you have seen before, so it'll be a refresher. A CDBG program was created in 1974 out of the Housing and Community Development Act. It was the combination of seven different programs, and they're listed there before you. And you can see those programs are kind of woven into the CDBG program itself. So there's elements of each of those from the creation of the CDBG program. There's two forms of CDBG funding: entitlement, which we are. We've reached 50,000 in population as of the 2000 census, so that enabled us to apply for entitlement funding. Everyone else is under the small cities, and they compete actually across the state. The state receives the money, local jurisdictions apply to the state for that funding, and then it's allocated out that way. Same rules, it's just a different process for funding. National objectives: this is by far the most important part of the CDBG program, because at least one of these must be met: benefit to low-to-moderate income persons, prevention and elimination of slum and blight, an urgent community need. And as you've heard me say several times, almost everything that we do is going to be benefit to low-to-moderate income persons. Low-to-moderate income is 80% of the area median income, okay? To kind of give you an idea, because there's a lot of different programs out there that use different types of income levels, this is the income level for CDBG. To give you some type of equivalent, that's roughly 200% of poverty, because some organizations, some programs use poverty line as their level. This is CDBG. There's also what's called presumed benefit, but I'll talk about that more in a minute. Prevention and elimination of slum and blight is what the city has done in the past, but not through its entitlement funding. Whenever we did some of the downtown projects, those were slum and blight. There's a specific process for that. That's when we had the 99 Plan, developed the Urban Renewal Plan, those types of things. An urgent community need must be tied to a presidentially declared disaster. We don't have those very often. That's a very rare occurrence. Talked about presumed benefit. This is, these are categories of individuals that HUD has said these have a presumed benefit of LMI status. And you can see them there before you. The one that I do want to point out is severely disabled adults. It is not children, just adults. Disabled children would still fall under the income of their parents, so that's why they do not have a presumed benefit. You can see the rest of them listed there. So going back, talking about since benefit to LMI persons is the largest category, and HUD requires at least 70% of our funds go to that category, it's important to know which ways can we benefit LMI persons. One way is through area benefit, which the city has done several times. This would be building a park in the low-income area, sidewalks, public infrastructure, things that you can't say who directly is benefiting, but the overall area is benefiting from that project. Those would be area benefits. Could be a community center. Could be a road, those types of things. Limited clientele is where you can specifically say who is benefiting. You benefited Ms. Smith at 1022 Chestnut. That's who benefited by receiving the services provided through CDBG. So that's a limited clientele, and that either requires income verification, or they have to have a presumed benefit under one of the categories that I showed you earlier. The other part is housing, which is similar to limited clientele, because then you can say who you're benefiting by providing housing. Either that's rehab, new construction, renovation, those types of things. Whatever type is still a housing benefit. Another one is jobs. By creating economic opportunities for low-to-moderate income persons, you're creating jobs for them. That's another way to benefit them. Talk about the income limits. Just to give you an idea, this is the current income limits, and it's all driven by family size, number of people in the home. They're updated annually. As you can see, these were released last December, so we should expect one in another couple of months. They usually go up by about somewhere around $150 a year, so you can kind of forecast out what next year's going to hold. As I said before, you must meet one of the national objectives: benefit to low-to-moderate income persons, prevention and elimination of slum and blight, or urgent community. Have to have one of those three. That is what makes projects eligible or not eligible more than anything. This is the most difficult to document, the most difficult to track, and the most difficult to show. So talk about eligibility. CDBG, one of the main benefits is its flexibility. The list of ineligible is pretty small, as long as you can demonstrate the national objective. But here is kind of a guide on what eligible activities are listed in the CFR. Acquisition of property, actually buying property. Now, there's other rules to follow, and relocation and things like that, but you can actually go out and buy property for a public purpose on another project. Clearance of property, actually removing the structures. That's more of a blight, where you're actually tearing down dilapidated housing, things like that. That's an eligible activity. Public facilities, sidewalk storms, sewers, all those types of things, all, you know, very straightforward area benefit eligibility. Public service, this one has grown in popularity in the last several years, and if you go back to the original creation of CDBG, they did not want to have a public service category. They wanted it to be a capital improvement-type grant program. However, like most things happen, a group of people get together, go to Washington, DC, and talk to another group of people, and you get it included into the Housing and Community Development Act. But they did set a cap. So only 15% of our funding can go towards public service projects. So that's an important note. Removal architectural barriers. This is a little bit more flexible than some of the other ones, because this is benefiting disabled persons. An architectural barrier could be a step, it could be a barricade, it could be something that would prevent a disabled adult, which you saw earlier as a presumed benefit, from accessing other resources or other infrastructure projects. It could be curb cuts, you know, at your access house, at your crosswalks. That's an architectural barrier. City of Louisville did a project in a museum. Museums generally you cannot get eligible under CDBG, because you can't show who's benefiting, who's the national objective that you're benefiting. However, they were able to go in and remove the architectural barriers for the museum, because then the person that was benefiting was a disabled adult. Even though you don't know individually who that is, you're benefiting the entire disabled adult population. Here's some other ones: rehab, residential, non-residential. The city did have a homeowner rehab program a couple of years ago that I'd worked on. That's since been closed for, I think, four years now. Homeownership assistance, economic development, and then planning and administration, which is also subject to a cap of 20%. So here's the list of ineligible activities. We can't build City Hall. That was pretty clear. Can't do that. Can't do political activities. Can't replace general fund dollars. So if we've allocated general fund dollars for a specific project, we can't pull those back and put CDBG in. Can't do that. Purchase of equipment. Anything bought with CDBG has to be fixed. Any type of asset has to be fixed. Here's an example for you. We can build a fire station, but we can't buy the fire truck to go inside the fire station, okay? Can't buy equipment, can't buy personal property. If it can move, it's ineligible. We had a project recently where we were going in to do a renovation project, and we had to require everything be fixed to the building. So you couldn't just walk out with it, those types of things. Operating and maintenance costs, which is pretty standard, and then income payments. We can't just give money directly to people. So this is what's ineligible. Everything else, you can find a way to make it eligible if you can meet the national objective. That's by far the most difficult to meet in most circumstances. This is a chart that HUD provides. I don't really like it, but HUD provides it, so I use it, showing the outcomes and objectives on how to measure CDBG and the usefulness of CDBG. Regulatory issues, I'll go through these very quickly. Each project must undergo an environmental review. Depending on the project determines the level of review that's required. Davis Bacon, if a construction project over $2,000, Davis Bacon wage rates apply, so you have to make sure that the labor on the job is paid at a certain wage. Lead-based paint, if you're involving buildings built before 1978, then generally you're going to have lead-based paint. You have to do testing, remediation, those types of things. Open procurement, things have to be bid, those types of things. And then relocation. I talked a little bit about that earlier. If you buy a piece of property and it's occupied, then you're going to relocate someone out of there. You have to pay their relocation expenses, and if they qualify, living expenses for a period of time. There's a whole process for that to document. It can be costly, so it can take a $150,000 project and turn it into a $300,000 project, just depending on the situation at hand. I've done a couple of them, and I've really tried to avoid them, and I try to get our sub-receipients to avoid them at all costs. Talk, whoop, there we go. Talk a little bit about the planning process. I've taken a three-pronged approach to generate citizen input. This is actually the third prong of that. So this is the final step. This step is required. We have to have a public hearing and a public comment period before we start. The first one that I did is I set up individual interviews with a few stakeholders here in town, sat down with them for about an hour, was able to talk about the housing and community development needs in Bowling Green. What they're seeing individually, some of the thoughts that I had, and we were just able to kind of talk back and forth. Then also I did a public meeting on October 23 at Parks and Rec, where we invited a variety of stakeholders, had 27 people show up from different organizations, citizens, separated them out into four roundtables. I did a similar presentation of what I'm doing today, and then kind of gave them the opportunity to talk amongst themselves, and then we shared all that together. So I've been able to generate input from that, too. This one is our last one. This is our public hearing, so after I'm done, we'll open up the microphone, so anybody can come up and make any comments. But we're still in the middle of a comment period, so they can still make written comments up until November 25 to me, and I'll talk about that at the end. After the comment period ends, then I really get into plan draft, and I'll talk a little bit more about what the plan is. Because this one's a little bit different. What you've normally seen me up here for is amendments and annual action plans. This is the consolidated plan. This is the five-year plan. This is laying out the priorities. So after the public hearing ends and the public comment period ends, then I actually get into drafting the plan, writing everything out, organizing everything, and then I'll come back before you sometime in January to present the plan to you, another public hearing, another public comment period, and then bring it back to you for approval before I send it off to HUD. After I get that done, then I get to start on the Year 11 Annual Action Plan. So this is kind of a year-long planning cycle for CDBG for me this year. Talk about the consolidated plan. As I said before, it lays out the priorities. It doesn't talk about specific projects, and you've heard me up here before talking about the annual plans whenever I say we're going to provide $50,000 to Organization Y, and they're going to do X. That's not what the consolidated plan does. Consolidated plan says this is where we're going to focus our money. These are our priorities. These are what we think the needs are: housing and community development, and this is how we're going to do it. So it talks about the data. What's going on? What are the citizens saying? What's the public comments that we're receiving? What are the priorities? And how are we going to do it? What is the process for doing that? The reason I bring that up is, in the last consolidated plan that will expire this year, we elected to do an agency application process. That is a local process, that's a local decision, that is not a HUD decision, that is however we want to do it. Some organizations, some jurisdictions have gone away from it, some have stayed with it. That's completely a local option. But that's part of this process, too, is deciding how do we want to take these funds and address the needs in our community for the low-to-moderate income individuals. For planning purposes, well, let me talk about my first bullet point first. As you're all aware, this is funded at the discretion of Congress. Congress's ability to draft budgets and agree on budgets has been slighted over the last several years, so we never really know that CDBG is going to be there five, 10 years from now. But for planning purposes, we're assuming at about $500,000 a year for five years, so that's kind of where we're at. That's been our average for the last couple of years, and that's a good planning number. It could be more, it could be less, but that's what we're using. So we're really looking at, we've got five years and $2.5 million that goes much faster than one you think. What are we going to do with it? So I want to talk about a few things, get into some of the data. Couple of years ago, I presented the 2010 census numbers to you, and talking about the trends of Bowling Green. So you'll see some of this stuff that I presented then also. The columns in blue are the past. You can see 1990, and I apologize to the audience that can't see this, because I'm in their way. 1990 here, 2000 here, 2010 here. This is the future projections for the city of Bowling Green: 2020, 2030. This oval represents about where we are right now. We're just over 60,000 in 2013, so we're on pace to meet this mark. And our growth, our population growth, has been pretty consistent for the last 20 years. It's about 1.5% each year, and we've continually just grown year after year. And I haven't seen anything that really makes me think that these numbers are wrong. They're about on pace. I showed you something similar to this a couple of years ago. This is our housing unit breakdown. The red line represents renter occupied, blue line represents owner occupied. Going back to 1990, we're just about 50/50, about as close as it gets. 2000 starts to spread apart, and you can see the renter starts to separate itself. Go out here to 2010, it's even further. These represent today, and these are estimates, and they're based on building permit data over the last three years. I actually fully expect this to be higher and this to be lower. But I can only go on what data I have available. And we've permitted approximately 1,200 apartment units in the last, multifamily units, not just apartments, multifamily units over the last three years. We've permitted just under 300 single-family homes. And I know that a portion of those were built for the purpose of rental, but I don't have the data to support what that portion is. What this also doesn't account for is the number of existing housing stock that has been converted from single-family detached homeowner to single-family rental. So this, that is not accounted for in these, too. That's why I say I fully expect this to be a little higher and this to be a little lower. And looking at this, this is growing, this is pretty much flat. Median household income, this was the exact same chart that I showed you before. This is all inflation adjusted for $2010. If you look, Bowling Green is in the blue, Warren County's in the red, Kentucky's in the green, and the US is in this purple-gray color here. We had a slight uptick and then decrease. And if you look from 2010 to 1990, we're actually below where we were 20 years ago. So our median household income is actually, has decreased in 20 years, whereas the county had the uptick, and they did drop off, too, which is normal with what's gone on in the last several years. But they're still well above where they were, and you can see the same trend for the other three. Individuals in poverty, similar thing, same graph that I showed you a couple of years ago. You can see in 2000, then the uptick, and then the slight uptick for the county, but you can see the drastic growth that the city took on over that 10-year period. HUD has developed an online mapping system that takes into account all the census data, and then allows me to kind of point and click and develop these maps. They're pretty good. They're not excellent, but they're pretty good, and I can get a lot of spatial information out there. This one shows the percentage of occupied renter housing. So you can look, the darker the color, the higher concentration of rentals. So you look at this dark color, that's above 72%. So let's go ahead and call that three-quarters of the people that live in that area, over three, about three-quarters or above are renters. And you can see the concentration. Give you a few landmarks. Here's the mall right here, okay? This is Scottsville Road coming in. Here's I-65. Lover's Lane is right in here. Here's Cemetery Road. So this is the downtown core. This is pretty much the university, which is, to not surprise, a highly rental area. Then you have from downtown to the bypass. This represents the bypass here. So the darker the color, the higher concentration of rental. The inverse of that is owner occupied, and I don't control the colors on these. It automatically does that through the system, so I apologize for the shift in colors. The darker the color, the higher concentration of owner occupied. So you can see, it's pretty much the inverse. If 75% of your population is renters, then the other 25% of your population's generally going to be homeowners. So you can see the difference there. So look at, this was the best way I found to show this without showing 15 different slides. What this one shows is the concentration of white alone, non-Hispanic. So this was the best way. So the darker the color, the less diversity in that area in that census tract. The lighter the color, the more diversity. I can do it by race and ethnicity, but I can't do them all together, so I took the white population, and then, so you can see the difference of the other census tracts.
Give me some landmarks there.
All right, let's see here. Here's downtown. Here's the university. Here's the mall. I-65. Cemetery Road. Here's the bypass. This is Scottsville Road right here. And then we'd have Nashville Road, Rustville Road, Morgantown Road. And I tried to make your printouts larger, so that you can kind of see through the layer there, and try to pick up some of those landmarks. But that's not controlling some of the formatting through the HUD website. This is kind of what I had to work with. Also looked at, wanted to show you the income breakout. So you can see, which is pretty much, not pretty much, very close to the owner occupied breakout, maybe a little bit different. The darker the green, the higher the income, and then once you get down to this white, then you're into the lower income area. So now you can start to see kind of where the population lives, where these things, whenever we just see normal data sets, we'll just see a total or a percentage, but now we can actually see where that changes across town, and start to see how these things affect, you know, some of the things that we do. To give you a reference, the median household income, the straight median household income for Bowling Green is about 33,000. So the white areas that you see all throughout here are at or below the median household income. The darker the area, the higher above they are. Go back to the landmarks. Greenwood Mall, I-65, Cemetery Road, downtown, the university, the bypass, Scottsville Road, Nashville Road, Rustville Road, Morgantown Road, and then Louisville Road would come out here.
Brent, how do you determine, I mean, is this block by block?
This is track by track.
Census tract?
Census tract. It doesn't allow me to go down to the block level through this. I can go through census, but then your blocks get so small, it's really hard to see on a large-scale map, so that's why they keep it at the census tract level.
Thank you.
Like I said before, we're accepting comments tonight. I do ask that anyone that does wish to make comments tonight, please state their name, any organization that they're affiliated with, and try to speak as clearly as possible. We will have a transcript of this meeting completed. Generally, Mr. Dale sits here with us. He was double-booked tonight, so he's going to watch the replay and type it, so I do ask that if you do make comments, to please speak. And I did forget to pass around the sign-in sheet, so I'm going to do that now. If there's any questions, people can send comments to me by email, by letter. The copy of the notice is on the website, and I'll put a copy of the presentation on the website tomorrow, and then we'll always kind of put things out on the website, so people can stay informed. But if there's any questions from the Commission, I'll address those before I open up the floor.
Go back to the population graph.
Yes, sir.
So we're projecting in 2020 around 70,000 people in the city of Bowling Green.
That's correct. And that would pretty much line up with the end of this five-year plan, because this won't take effect until fiscal year 2015. This will actually start in July, but I have to do everything nine months ahead of time to be ready for the start. So by 2020, that's what census and also the state data center is expecting our population to be. And that follows the normal growth pattern that we've seen over the last 20 years.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Childers? Excuse me.
All right.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments for the record, we invite you to come up to the microphone at this time. Don't be intimidated just because there's a microphone and a camera. We're just trying to make sure we get the record down correctly. Anyone at all? Mr. Rodney, come on up, sir.
Harry, I didn't see you.
Name an organization, please.
Yeah, my name is Rod Goodman. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. And before I get started, I wanted to say, I've told Brent this to his face on several occasions, and behind his back on several more, but I would like to let you guys know that Neighborhood and Community Services is the finest governmental organization I have ever worked with. They have been very great to work with. We've had some great partnerships with the city at Habitat. Our folks right now, through a program out of code enforcement, are repainting a house for a family, and so we've had just some great partnerships. I want to thank Brent for the way he laid this out, because it kind of gives us a good picture of where we are housing-wise in Bowling Green. And this is something I kind of work with and look at every day, and we kind of feel like we are a drop in the bucket sometimes of meeting some of the housing needs that are out there. I look forward to a day when we come together and we don't have to talk about substandard housing in Bowling Green, because everybody has a decent, safe, and affordable place to live. But we're not there yet, and so this program and the work that Brent's doing is so important to our community. For a family to be able to live affordably in Bowling Green right now, fair market rent on a two-bedroom apartment is $675 a month, according to the National Low Income Housing Coalition. That family would have to make $12.98 an hour, work 40 hours a week, 52 weeks out of the year, to be able to afford that home. The problem is, that's a pretty high wage for our families. The median wage for a renter in our community is $9.56 an hour, which leaves them considerably short of being able to afford that rental unit. And since we can see that we're in a place where we're moving into a higher rental income community, I would really appreciate what they're doing, but I would like for us as a city to really address those needs of that rental community, both from a landlord and a tenant's side, so that those families can know that they have a decent, safe, and affordable place to live in. And so I just want to thank you guys for the partnerships that we've had, but I do want you to know this is very important work that these guys are doing, and we are very thankful to have them as partners in the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Appreciate those kind words, and thank you for your hard work. Anyone else? Last call. All right, we'll conclude this public hearing. If there are no other comments, and if you do have additional comments that come to you after we've closed it, please feel free to get in touch with Mr. Childers at the city. Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. DeFebo, do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
I do have one, if I can pull it back out. I want to acknowledge Parks Maintenance Division Manager Gerald Belcher, who has retired from Parks and Rec after 33 years of service. Came on in '80, full-time athletic staff, assistant in '86, promoted to Park Maintenance Division Manager in '94, and has now pulled the pin, has abandoned us, and enjoys her Be careful.
Mr. Mayor, I have one recognition I would like to make. I'd like for our citizens of Bowling Green to know that today is our mayor's birthday, and on behalf of the city, we'd like to wish you a happy birthday.
That's kind of you. I appreciate that. Let I share this couple of days with Assistant City Manager, City Clerk Katie, who celebrated her 30th birthday yesterday. Thank you. And thank you for the ice cream you bought me at supper. I appreciate that. All right. Any other comments? All right, do you have any comments, Mr. DeFebo?
Today's not my birthday, but we wouldn't need to have an executive session.
Entertain a motion for the reasons that she'll provide.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only win publicity would likely affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. And KRS 61810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against her on behalf And KRS 61810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against her on behalf of the city.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Dinning. Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. I have on the next item is approval of minutes from our regular meeting for October 15, 2013.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Hill, second by Mr. Williams. You got me all confused on the ice cream bit.
You forget her name, Mayor?
Yeah, I did. Any discussion, other than harassment? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We have a public comments section of our meeting, similar to the public hearing. If there's an issue or item that someone needs to bring to the commission's attention that's not on our agenda tonight, we'd invite you to come to the microphone at this time. Seeing no one step forward, we'll go to the second reading of ordinance 2013-1334.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordances, ordinance amending Chapter 9, General Effects, Subchapter 9-3 Noise of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances, to provide an exemption for industrial zoned properties.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Take this, the, I proposed this upon recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce, who had some inquiries from different industries that thought about coming to town, thought this might be an impediment to them. We believe that our ordinance already exempted general noise from general operations of industrial opportunities, but they wanted to clarify that, and we're happy to do so. Any other comments or questions? I will tell you that I had the police department look up, and we've had no noise complaints at industries over the past three years. So probably won't notice it at all. Any comments? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2013-35.
Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, and ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013C, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,800,000, for the purpose of currently refunding the outstanding City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation bonds, Series 2003. The proceeds of which in turn refunded an earlier series of bonds issued to finance the construction and equipping of a municipal convention center and trade show facility. Approving the forms of bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of the bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Motion by Hill, second by Dinning. Mr. DeFebo, I'm sorry, this is second reading. Are there any other comments or discussion? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-175.
Municipal Order approving the transfer of Theodore L. Webb to the position of Plan Reviewer 1 in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo?
Thank you, Mayor. Corby Lambert retired recently, and it created a vacancy for a plan reviewer. This is a specialized job, and so we tightened the circle of qualification. And from that process, we found within our own ranks Teddy Webb, who was interested in performing this function. Teddy, as you know, is a coordinator for code enforcement. And we feel comfortable with his broad skill set, that he'll do well in this position of his choosing. This would naturally create a position for a code enforcement coordinator. Teddy is here, and Brent Childers is here. Do you have any questions about this position?
Any comments or questions? This makes you more valuable as employee, Teddy. We'll end up calling you to go everywhere now. All right, please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-176.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Charles W. Stewart to the position of Laborer 2 in the Public Works Department. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dinning. Mr. DeFebo?
We had an opening in the Public Works Department, and we went out to advertise. As our protocol, even though we had an opening in Operation Tech 1, our protocol is to bring individuals in at Laborer 2, and they progress through a series of refinements, and they're promoted to an op tech. We advertised both internally and externally. We had 56 candidates, and from that discernment process, it was the opinion that Mr. Stewart was the best applicant to fill this position. I think Mr. Stewart is here. He would like to accept your accolade.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations. That's the first item of business. We always have to embarrass you right off. Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations again. Municipal Order 2013-177.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2013-46 for fiscal year 2013 sidewalk construction program from J.C. Brewer Construction Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the total amount of $221,677.80.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo?
As we chatted at 4:00, one of the better things that we do for our citizens is provide good sidewalks. And continuing with that effort, we went out to bid for an additional 4,900 linear feet of sidewalk and curb. We have four respondents. Of that, lowest bid was J.C. Brewer. Jeff and Melissa are here, if you have any questions about the bid.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-178.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-07 for beverage provider for soft drink vending and concessions from Clark Beverage Group Incorporated of Oakland, Kentucky, for a total annual net cost of $44,360 for five years. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo?
We use a variety of drinks, soft drink products throughout the city. One of those is for colo-type beverages. We went out to public bid for a five-year contract. The bid itself was divided into a number of sections and incentives. From that discernment process, it's JB's opinion that we should go with Clark Beverage Group of Oakland, Kentucky. Brent Belcher is here, if you have any questions about the bid. You wore a suit tonight, by the way.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you for coming, Mr. Garrett. See, it was easy for you there.
Thank you.
Municipal Order 2013-179.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for City Manager Kevin D. DeFebo to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Covington, Kentucky.
So move.
Motion by Dinning, second by Waltrip.
I have no comments, other than that I went to the KLC conference along with Katie and Jean. We represent the city well. We received some information about various things, and we're here to fulfill the requirement asking you to approve my travel.
The commission only approves yours. You take care of the other employees. Any comments or discussion?
You approve your own also.
That's true. I don't believe we've done that in a while. Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-180.
Municipal Order approving fiscal years 2013, 2014 through 2016, 2017 capital improvement program for the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So move. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo?
I think it was last month that Katie and others presented the three-year capital improvement plan. That was sunshine to you and asked for comments. There appeared to be no comments needing to amend the plan. We're here tonight to ask you to ratify that recommendation. It's important to know that it's a three-year document. The only active part is that part, which is in the 2014 budget. The other two years are planning years that could be affected by how much money we have or by your priorities. So we're asking for a three-year approval, only one part of which is budgeted.
Any comments or discussion? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-181.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, in the amount of $8,415.15.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill.
We're essentially here with this municipal order to ask you to accept roughly $8,400 of federal money to purchase, help to purchase 10 new vests for our officers. We'll have to provide the other 50% match for the same. As the commission knows, this is an ongoing priority of the police department to outfit our officers with the latest bulletproof vest technology. So we asked your approval. Jennifer Nash, who did the paperwork on the application, is here. Do you have any questions?
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-182.
Municipal Order approving a job development incentive program employee withholding its credit agreement with Bilstein Cold Rolled Steel LP, and approving and ratifying the execution of a memorandum of understanding related to Bilstein Cold Rolled Steel LP.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill, both members of the Job Development Incentive Program Committee, just for the record.
I am here, Melinda's here, and Jeff's here. Did I miss anybody? And Rick. And Bill.
I'm not on that thing.
We'll get you on next year. As we know, there's an exciting new enterprise in the community, providing 90 new jobs at the trans park. A Bilstein Cold Rolled Steel is coming to our community. We've been working with the chamber and the ITA to provide the incentives to help us compete with other municipalities and states across the nation. Our JDI P committee provides the incentive to Bilstein. Under our program, we provide for 10 years, we give them back 1% of the 1.85 we collect. That is essentially equals to $560,000 over the 10-year period that they can use to reduce their costs or to add new jobs. The committee has approved unanimously. As you know, this has also been sunshine publicly, and we're kind of late to arrive in our involvement, but the public can be assured that we were involved early and often in helping to bring this company here.
Any comments or discussion? When they get here, we probably should call them Bilstein. They'd prefer that.
What do we call them? Bilstein?
Did you say Bilstein? It's Bilstein. I got corrected during the announcement, so.
And Mayor, before you call or roll, if you could, remember this also includes ratifying your signature on that memorandum of understanding. Not much should we talk about that a whole lot, but this was something that was required prior to the public announcement, so we couldn't talk about it publicly, as anyone that discussed prior to the public announcement. But as you can see, they wanted quite a few parties or a party to this agreement. The mayor did go ahead and sign on behalf of the city. We looked through it. We had some comments and questions. They made the changes we asked for, so we were satisfied with the changes they made in agreement. So this municipal order also ratifies the mayor's execution of that agreement.
Any other comments or discussion? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal, excuse me, first reading of ordinance 2013-36.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2014.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo?
A good budget is a tight budget, and we use the amendment process to make sure that the budget is tight and that revenues reflect expenditures, and everything's put tightly into the right categories. Where, as you can see from the MO, these are various donations, revenues, and offsetting expenditures. I think we all know what all these are, but Jeff is here, if you have any questions.
Can I comment your questions? Please call or roll.
Dinning?
Yes.
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-183.
Municipal Order approving dissolution of the Bowling Green Public Properties Corporation and the City of Bowling Green Municipal Projects Corporation, authorizing execution of all necessary documents relating to a land exchange between the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport and the Bowling Green Public Properties Corporation, authorizing execution of all necessary documents to transfer properties belonging to both corporations to the City of Bowling Green, and authorizing the city attorney and other appropriate city officers to file appropriate documents to carry out the dissolutions. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
I'll defer to our esteemed county attorney to handle the legal. I don't believe she's here, but.
Just start out the request from the airport. I think the airport contacted the city that they were interested in doing a land exchange. I think they needed to expand the parking lot, and they were willing to give the city some additional land that they did not need in exchange for that. I think Melissa or somebody from Public Works can address any questions you have about that. They've looked at that. They're okay with it. The fire department has looked at it, and they're okay with it, because the land is next to the airport fire station. Once we started looking at, it also quickly became apparent to everybody that the city of Bowling Green didn't own that land, so we couldn't exchange it. It belonged to one of the holding companies. That's basically all you can call it. Jeff can address these too, and don't speak too long. But if you recall, prior to GO bonds, cities could not issue bonds without taking it to the voters. And in doing creative ways to get around that, basically, cities in those days were able to create corporations who then issued the bonds and then leased the, the city leased the buildings from these corporations, and the lease payments were bond payments. These two corporations were two of these holding companies we formed to basically do debt service for us years ago. Both these two still own land. The debts been long paid off, and I guess we've just been late getting to these. But we no longer have a need of these corporations. We need to get their land into the city's name, because right now, we're paying every year stuff to keep these corporations going. They serve no need, no purpose with GO bonds now. So, we're just asking tonight to allow us to dissolve both of these. Both those boards will have to meet to approve dissolution. One of them will also have to meet to approve this land exchange, because that land is in their name. So, that's why we're here tonight, to approve that land exchange and to authorize the dissolution of both these corporations.
Any other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand thirteen, one eighty-four.
Municipal order approving amendments to the City of Bowling Green sidewalk program, new sidewalk component.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo?
At four o'clock, we did a show and tell about the staff's new recommendations to improve the sidewalk program. I think those were well received, and so they're manifest tonight in this municipal order. Essentially, there's three: to change the project map from a three-year prioritization to one year, to make some minor changes to the compensation for property needed or taken